We have been having a public meeting to do our second interview of Doug Armstrong. I can't understand it from the veteran part of the board. The first interview was very, very well. So we're in the process. We have the four boards person last Thursday to schedule that public meeting. I thought we had an evening and we came about twenty minutes after all. It's a very big meeting and we'll shut up. So I'll make sure that we're all aware that it won't be scheduled like next week. It's gonna be out of service at nine o'clock. But we're trying to do that in February. So I'll look for that invitation coming up. And then there are two numbers, two recommendations on consent agenda for throwing two boards on our public area today. You can use any comments or any notes. Any questions? We're both interested in public observing and we've all applied for a couple of minutes today. So we're gonna have to read us off the application. So if you'd like to be a library, find your information. During that conversation, I guess the public comes to you as you went and go throughout. Questions, comments, or comments at the time to address this back. Any questions for me? What we do to get rid of it. We're down to day eight. Sounds number one. Jamie, you know, should have conducted that.
Yeah, hey, so this is just helping with the report on the funding for our community survey. So we've got staff that have a brief outline, started wrapping in some questions, wording. It also included the last, my knowledge, citywide sort of omnibus survey back in 2011. I would think interesting to see what people looked at in the past and open-ended responses are often a particular bit of information. Although they're difficult to sort of condense in any sort of quantitative way, I think. Yeah, they're, yeah, they're a great link. So if anyone's curious, could be around in 2011 or not, I mean, I'll pull those back, you know. So I'm putting together just a couple of general comments. I think I'll get into this more on Saturday, but I guess it's fine.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, so, okay. So thinking about, what do you think will the results of these questions help inform some future actions? So I think oftentimes, like if we're going to approach the drafting of question, there is often looking to this many questions. From a similar survey, so we've done in the past, so we have a community on the third where it started, you know, the wheels, people interacting. And then adopt it straight out or adapt it to serve different. And one thing I like to think about, because I would be well touch on designing analysis, thinking about how would you sort of analyze the data you get from any particular question. So if you look at a question and you realize, oh, I don't know what you're going to do for the result of this or kind of type of response distribution would be, and it's unclear to you what that would be would do when you gave it to a question. So I like to keep, keep both the question wording in mind and ultimately the one that I can do with. It's a fifty-fifty split. What does it mean if it's sometimes people say that, what does that tell us? Is that, is this a meaningful question? So I think about that. To the extent that people think something like this would be an annual effort, which is something I would infer us to consider. And I think it can be used with two of the questions that might be helpful for tracking track over time. Maybe that's where we put up more general question that tells them it's four times what you do with this year. But five years from now, I will get that's changed in the past five years. It gives you some information. Those types of questions are also interesting, I think. Another general framework to keep in mind, this is something I learned right, one thing in school, but in a particular project I was working on. In terms, in terms of satisfaction, so if you think about a resident satisfaction, where are ones of certain residents. A lot, certainly, and you might want to be a customer towards the satisfaction. And satisfaction can really be defined as the difference between the expectation and reality. Often times on a survey, you just assess the satisfaction, what was your satisfaction level? But sometimes that, that's not sufficient to know what you need to be different. So one of the things I like to give is like, how long you waited at the oil change company? Maybe you and I, between the fifteen minutes, you expected twenty thirty, I expected twenty five. So one of them says, like, one of them says, "So we both had the same wait time." And so how does the dealership know what change made? So to the extent, I'd like in a helpful to assess both, what was the reality, what was the service experience? And then what was your satisfaction with that, or even more what was your expectation? So not just a single question, measure of satisfaction, but they're trying to figure out what actually happened and what did they find is different. So that's just sort of a general idea about that. And then something else I do wanna, I am sensitive to given that it's sort of smallish community and something that's been a lot of surveys. Who wants, like, particularly even on the survey, thinking about essentially any single respondent individual or business owner would be able to be identified based on their response either to one question or to multiple questions. So, so you know, the city would be sponsoring the survey, so in theory, I think the new person that the city would have access and they could look at. You know, they could look at one person, like, I guess considering what one person's role response is, you try to, I got somebody interesting to see. Oh, this was, you know, they lived here five years, they lived here, they were like, oh, this is probably that person. I'm not convinced that any staff would do that, but I think respondents can be sensitive. What level of information they're providing, they need to assess if they're worried about being identified. So we want to gather specific information, but we also want to be connected and in any confidence, really, what happens well. In terms of general, and we can talk with you anytime, your questions or comments. All my potential topics, I thought we'd get out to some sort of general part of life, about the texture. And then I thought, addresses specifically, the thing that I'm interested in finding out about is something that's comfortable is the provision of services, what are people's experiences like in variety of different service departments? And sort of getting at those sort of satisfaction question. Performance of government, that could be their gratitude for staff, which is their gratitude to council. And then would you get into questions about the budget? I think calling and getting specific to the capital improvement plan could be interesting. And so we could think for the next fiscal year, whatever the next thing on our list in some of these special projects. They are watching, you're likely to figure out on that. But I think there could be room for other topics, specifically the fire station, something I'm thinking in mind. If various work and commissions had a couple of questions they wanted to add, the parks and rap, we'll talk about them a little bit later. They're interested in getting feedback on this potential design of milk free park for. And so it could be refraining some of the questions we want to work with commissions, be thinking about it really. Milk free park for, could be refraining all the questions that the public may have for what are they looking for in milk free park for, for every normal opportunity and things like that. And then some sort of general type of general graphics, and then of course, another guy. So I guess I'm, I'm happy to continue looking at this forward, but I was looking for feedback, who they're now or on Saturday in terms of these sort of general topic categories, if you feel like things that are interesting to you. If they're a big layer in the hole, that no, I want a general topic on this. And pretty much any feedback, again, I'm happy to keep moving forward, but I'm happy to have your feedback, I think.
I think it's very good to start. I think that as we look at the package for workshop on Saturday, to be bold and generous, put these questions out of those categories. One, one that comes to mind, you have a call capital, that's a good question. But that doesn't spell that out, so put some of that out there. Good start, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, thank you. One of the lines that really stood out for me was that, the difference in satisfaction for, you know, in terms of expectations versus realities, right? Really appreciate that perspective. I think in some sense, I have thought about that without really realizing what you're about it. So I really appreciate the, the substance that I can say, oh, that. I had a couple areas of interest that I, you know, just wanted to share on Saturday. But also one thing that I was thinking in terms of how often we do this survey. One year to me a little bit short, because some of the things that we can do to improve by the time we make a decision as with the budget and I think it's happened, it's a year, a year and a half. So maybe a five year, every five year, we give enough time for something that the city can change. And so that person or people can have a different experience that be able to, for us who gather, who I have.
Okay, um, if you approve that again, for session five, I don't know if anybody else, we're wanting to finalize on session five. So I'm trying to get that out tomorrow, Wednesday, for the ones that get the access. Okay, so what's, if anybody has anything to add, or questions, or whatever you just discussed. Have any comments or, or whatever. And we'll have a little chat on Saturday, so thank you for your answers on that. Uh, we are down to the consensus agenda, okay, two questions left. Motion by Griffin, right now, is there a second?
My second.
Second question out, thank you. Then if you want to just call both, or who are the consensus items?
Griffin?
Yeah.
Uh, Rob?
Yeah.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle?
Same.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries five zero, extension, make it set up. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're down to new business. Four items of new business, and first is consideration of the fire station guiding principles. And just had the workshop, so I think this, I'm gonna make a motion, something like, I'll give it a try, alright? I moved the option of the guiding principles statement to the fire station. Based on our workshop earlier today, which include item number one, number two, number five, number eight, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Did I get them all?
Yeah.
Well, um, with the understanding that we have the ability to massage or add further in the future, but that's the initial set.
My second.
Want to learn that, second question out, thank you both. Good, good workshop, any discussion needed? You're gonna do the, just recap, you're gonna do a work session on the fourteenth? Um, focus on the background issue, period, what is the problem, obviously, it could be the timeline, suggestions?
Mm-hmm.
But we'll all return if there are more.
If anybody has any feedback, if they want, or for a bit to, or a next version, or next draft, please, uh, send them to me.
It's a simple challenge, it's called a vote, do for, on the motion and the next one.
Fisher?
Yeah.
Arab?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries six zero, excellent. Um, new business item number two, is consideration of award of the second street water main and sidewalk. The category of accident ingredient for, I'm actually seeing six hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred forty-five. Did I come with Dan? Still have work on that one? Did I, because that one, like, Dan still has, he's still here, work on that one.
Yes, and Josh.
We can all, we can all, we can all.
Yes, and Josh.
If you could get a motion, you want to get a motion, yeah, I'll make them, I'll take it. Motion by Pauls or Suckers. I don't, thank you. Okay, good overview, I'm okay.
Sure, so, um, we have talked about, um, the second street water main and sidewalk project for quite a while. Uh, second street is one of the, the oldest water main in the city. Um, we're planning to use ARPA dollars to assist in the funding of this project. Uh, we put it out to bid and we, we got a reasonable price. Given kind of the way the market is looking right now, we're actually, I was a little surprised at, at how well the business came in. Uh, we made it a few bids that were, uh, on a higher end, on a much, much higher end. Um, but, uh, you know, this product also includes the addendum and the recommendation. For the six hundred eighty-six thousand includes the, um, addition of the sidewalk down to first street car. Did I, done the same thing?
Not, not related to the project, um, as you mentioned, Justin, it includes a lot of water main work. You're also gonna be putting a little bit of storm sewer in as part of it. Uh, and again, one of the strategies of this project is really setting the table for when second street is reconstructed. Could be ten years out, but we pass up the grades in a spot where it's relatively easy. Concord, during the X meeting, as was mentioned, is the low bidder. Uh, we've worked with them before, they did home projects, uh, you know, five minute walk from here. Um, they did a section of central street between cider mill and tracks. And then we also had them do the segment of the border, border trail, starting at central, I think, you know, and then the beach, we drive. Worked with them on those two projects and, oh, generally work with them more, yes, water projects. Generally, it's usually a pretty favorable experience, so we're excited to see a little better.
What was the estimate?
It was, yeah, it was a little north of, uh, what, a little bit was, I want to say it was around seven hundred something. You could put the wrong ones, there are only, yeah.
And will be a few of these structures drawn done and the other future?
Those that'll be coming next. Um, we want, yeah, we want to get their schedule, see what they're planning to.
Yeah, that's even, basically, second off, okay. And is there enough, I'm looking at it, it looks like there's definitely enough items that are non-water that we made about out of our own funds?
That's right. Yep, and the, the entire sidewalk is, um, the storm piece, um, both come out of, out of the roads.
I didn't have, I don't know, I want to see how, what happened. Yeah?
Um, so again, with the understanding that tonight is for the, the water and the sidewalk. We haven't really finalized whether or not we're gonna have curves, full curve or non-full curve or something else here. Will us setting the sidewalk currently have an impact on limiting us what we can do in the future? Basically, the way the grades are set is with the assumption that we would have a curve. Somewhere we use that typical section to have the curve as part of it. So it'll, if it, if it needs to go back to not the curve, um, it should be a problem.
Okay. Um, there are, on, do, page nineteen or second street, it's Hudson. Some janky sections in the sidewalk, are those ghosts or is there a particular reason why we have, for example, two ninety-degree angles?
Those, those janky sections were, were noted and, um, I talked, I talked about those with, with Marcus. And, um, I believe that's something that we're working to address in the revised, some plans to go to the, the, to go to comfort. Yep.
Is that with the G or the J?
The J.
Your janky?
The J.
And, uh, just my, one, one last, I'll try to see. Is that page nineteen, is that, I'm trying to see what?
Yeah, two forty-three, yes.
Two forty-three, okay, that's a lot. On, on the other's approach to Hudson Street.
Okay.
Looks like there's probably a, a firefighter or something there.
Yeah.
Again, as, as we're designing sidewalks, remember they're gonna live a very long time. And it's very important to get it right the first time and making it convenient to folks. If, if you have this thing, I would be annoyed to use that sidewalk. You know, you walk across someone's wall, but I don't know, something else. Um, would you say that including the second street sidewalk as an add-on, like they reduce the cost if we were to do it as a separate project? It seems pretty low compared to what I remember from previous sidewalk projects.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think you definitely get past the scale. We, we are taking care of grading work, a lot of it. A lot of the, you know, obviously, there's costs in the factory, but being part of a larger project and dollars, it's a possibility. Spread out a little bit.
All right, this, so everyone's clear, this is just the sidewalk on the, the village side, the interior side of second street, correct? Not both sides?
Correct, on, on the, on the side of the parking lot, opposite from the airfield.
I meant running along, along the street.
Oh, oh.
It's just on the one side where all the houses are.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
The south side, away, away from here. Yep.
Southwest is shot.
Excellent.
I'm good, thank you. Very good. Other questions on, yeah, I think we're over there. Good, I think that's, if you think that works.
Yeah, I think this will, I think like in April, I think this starts to get a little, like.
Michelle?
Yes.
Arab?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes. Motion for approval, thank you. On the list, item three, discussion on emergency response cost recovery ordinance. There are powers, um, Charles, your question, it must be included in the.
Alright, and, oh, and I'll clear the question, whatever I, I mess up. Uh, so this has been something that's been discussed, uh, at the DFD for a little while. Cost recovery ordinance is basically if your house burns down or you flip a truck with hydrochloric acid or your DTE and the power line falls down and you don't come out to fix it for homeowners and the fire department has to stand in watch, make sure no one touches it, then there's an opportunity to recover some of that cost, recovery ordinance. Because of the way the DAFD is structured, the DAFD can't adopt it itself, it has to be the individual communities. Uh, our discussion is with that, it's all for one or for nobody because it'd be, it wouldn't be right for someone to be watching this if the other folks wouldn't be. Yeah, and my experience from the zoning side, after there's a fire, one of the first calls I get after is, what do I have to do to rebuild? Is from the insurance company asking, is there a cost recovery ordinance, what's the fee? So if you've got homeowner's insurance, it's generally part of the coverage that they're gonna pay for the extra cost beyond this particular fire service. This is very rough here. Um, and the idea is that all three communities would adopt it and would have the DFD administer it for us. There's an opportunity for hardships, um, and the DFD could adopt resolutions that say, here are the costs that these various things are. And that's what I got.
Yeah. Why did, why did they not, did, did this just come out now? Because something that, that written has always been there, like on the original documents, and we just sat for a while, or for a very long while. Or what, what got this building? Give me some background.
Well, the, the chief can speak to it. I would say it's, it's come to my attention from the zoning side is there are fires. As a, a means to, well, all, all I have started and I can.
Sorry, I have to take the mask off, like, it's the wrong side, so. So cost recovery ordinance actually, um, well, the challenge we have is under stare title three back in the eighties. Uh, the municipalities were authorized to build war hazards, materials incidents, provided they had a cost recovery ordinance in place. Actually, here in Washawak County, it all started in the nineties when they put together county-wide hazmat team. At that time, each municipality in, in Washawak County was supposed, each fire chief was supposed to go back to their municipalities and get a cost recovery ordinance in place so that the hazmat team could do that in particular, Billy. Uh, it didn't happen here in, with the DAFD and the three municipalities, for some reason, that was never put into place. So, um, this came to light with me when the, how county spun up the, uh, technical rescue team. And, uh, open slipwater rescue teams that they, uh, put together. And those two teams don't, also don't have the ability or a funding stream, uh, when they're utilized in the municipalities. So after looking at that, I actually looked at, started looking around for all of the cost recovery. This is a just for fires or just for emergency response. In some cases, for instance, we can't charge for, uh, currently, we can't charge if we give somebody a fire report. We have no authority to charge them the five bucks for the fire report. Uh, or if we create documents for them and, you know, those administrative costs that we shouldn't have to bear, FOIA requests and things like that. Uh, and so getting the cost recovery ordinance across the board is important for us to do our day-to-day stuff as well as emergency response. So it's just something that they were behind in, they didn't, didn't do it at the time.
We get.
Why, I don't know. Well, some other things, like if your fire alarm keeps going off, they have to keep trying it up over and over and over. There's no, um, mechanism to, to state it ahead.
So, yeah, what wasn't included in this is that the, there will be an accompanying resolution from the DAFD Fire Board. What, what this particular ordinance will do is for, for this board to authorize the DAFD Fire Department to, uh, do this cost recovery. But actually, the Fire Board will have to list out what are the things that we're gonna charge. So one will be structure fires, one might be excessive fire alarms. If you don't fix your fire alarm system, we have to keep going out there, who might start billing you for that. Uh, unauthorized burning, if somebody, uh, starts a fire in the city to burn their leaves, uh, they know it's against the ordinance. Right now, we go out and put it out, but you might, you might want to bill for that because they were kind of stupid and should have known. Um, other things that often get billed for automobile accidents, if we have to do explication. Uh, automobile accidents, if there's hazardous materials that we have to use resources, uh, to, to clean up that material often gets billed. Uh, what we won't get into here is billing for medical services. That's a, a whole different game and we want to stay away from that, you know, and follow these up insurance companies. So DAFD Board will actually decide what items are, they feel that they should bill for. And typically, it's things that we spend resources, that we buy and we use them one time and throw them away. There ought to be a way to recover the cost.
And it's one of the, the bigger challenges now, um, cost-wise, maybe like the hazmat situation, the train here flipped over or a truck passing through on the roads, that's a lot of manpower, a lot of equipment, a lot of time. Um, and so there has been thoughtful discussion about, we don't want to, you know, folks who live here are paying a certain base rate to make sure the fire department's available, um, and we don't want to put extra pay, but we, we want to make sure there's some balance.
So sort of an example of, can help me understand this more, so in, this fact is that, you know, there is a base pay, that is a base pay. So for example, if somebody's house is on fire, what part of it is considered the service that fire department will provide? And what part of it is that goes into this ordinance that they might have to pay?
So for typical house fire, structured fire, obviously, this. So, for typical house fire, structured fires, obviously, this does not affect our response at all. We're not responding based on pay, alright, not doing that. So, under a cost recovery program, what a fire chief would do or a fire department would be calculate the full amount of, what did it cost us, how much were the trucks, how much was the manpower, how much was the equipment that was used, and it generates a bill. A typical house fire, if it's a room in contents, one room, could generate a bill for three, maybe four thousand dollars. That gets sent to the homeowner who submits it to their insurance. And your insurance policy already has a rider in it generally, that they'll cover up to five hundred dollars. So what we would do for part of that cost recovery ordinance is say that we're going to bill them the full amount, but whatever their insurance pays is what we'll accept, they don't need to write up your check. We're not here to hurt people, but in structure fires and in automobile accidents, it's already billed into your insurance policy that they'll pay that. So we might as well tap into it and get it. The other one that generally pays quite often is utility companies. When you have a line, power line down in the community, and we respond to that, we generally have to stay there until they come out and fix them on. The utility companies have convinced the Michigan Legislature that it ought to be okay for the Fire Department to stay there for at least the first hour, but we'll pay them if they bill us for anything over that. And so, but the first thing they say is send us your cost recovery ordinance. If you don't have it, they're not going to. Same thing with your insurance companies. Uh, they run the law. It depends on whether it's a hazmat issue.
There's something, I'm not saying that, I mean, it didn't come very deep about it as we're talking about it, but at first glance, it does seem like what is it that we are paying for? And this, this is starting to become a hybrid model of, you're paying for us to be there, but then you're actually using that, like, piece of service. It would pay, there's like, so right now, there's a flat rate that we're paying. So I'm trying to figure out what is the difference about that? And then there's the other end of the continuum where everything is completely piece of service, you only pay if you use the service. I'm trying to figure out why this hybrid approach, like, what is not working about what we're having to have? Just that there's more money that you get, because money won't be free, if, I mean, the insurance company starts paying that, and it's going to be fast back to the consumer, higher insurance premium. So, you just increase how much, you know, direct from the consumer, like, I guess I'm just trying to figure out. It seems like a shifting money.
So, you're saying that's. Okay, one more, you just said a balance question, why isn't it in place? And the idea that something people can pass back to the residents, this is the whole. The idea that we're already paying for a service, like, we need to ask the mayor, by a high amount of knowledge, public knowledge, for the service, like. Although the cost of, the reason, really, one reason it's hard to get at is that because as the cost of the service goes up, there should be some way to offset it. But then you get into the question, well, some of the users within the system are the ones that are held to offset it, are they paying additionally to their taxes, because of the cost of, you know, ultimate tax to their credit rates? That question is hard to assess, you know, it's hard to know what that bill affected. The other thing that's hard to scan. Is, you know, and if we, that would have been enough to ask for this before, I don't know, we have a good example. It's hard to know what we're really achieving if we put this in place. You know, if we were to take all the things that are on this list, if I'm going to page two forty-seven, or there's a whole bunch of things. I might number what we're doing, most of the part of the parties. It's hard to know, you know, if everybody's insurance, base insurance, base two fifty or five hundred. You know, but you only have. How many house fires have? You know, what is the total amount that you're actually achieving by doing this? And then the fourth year ever. You know, that's one of the questions, I mean, it won't be able to. And that's one of the discussions that have been at the Fire Board, that they're working on getting that. Last year, if we had this, this is what it would have generated. This was just meant to be a very introductory discussion. And then, and then the other, those things that's up. That's been debated a little bit between, just, between more and less, between this and all of those. You know, if there were two hundred occurrences of these in the city and generated tax, another amount in our municipality, is it also one, or is it offset, you know, is it, does our cost or our number, or theirs offset theirs? Or is it our share? And the chief, the chief has proposed that all of this would go towards our capital cost, I think.
Correct.
Cheap and simple to equate some of that. That ownership, but I know that there's. I know that there are some other folks that have been concerned about how that's applied. And, you know, the other thing, like, let's say we adopt, that's why we're trying to all, if we can do it, we're testing out earthquake. You know, the heat asset.
Depending how the work of the DFD.
Well, I, well, I mean, if we tested, the chief, the chief of the staff on DFD was administering this the lines of supply and two ounces, and we got a project. And in that case, I would say that any money we recover from bill towards our share of money. Yeah, you know, you're right, but then, you know, we're using a shared cost, and the chief's a member, we're interested to administer it, so. It gets complicated when everybody's not all of that. So, so the easiest thing right now is go off, go out. That will, the hardest thing, like, did you get all three boards to agree that this is how we want to do it, this is how we're all agreed to do it equally, that's our, uniformly, that order.
So, you're absolutely right, and the reason it's written the way it is, is, if all three municipalities don't adopt it, then I'm not going to recommend that the DAFD Board actually does a resolution to charge for anything. Me and my staff are the ones that are going to be putting this out, taking the time to develop the invoice, get it out there, send it to people. If only one municipality adopts it, and they want to get that money, I don't have, I don't have time to do that, okay? Maybe one of your treasurer, clerk, or somebody, I'll give them the information, they can do the billing, because it's a long process. If somebody doesn't pay, you go to small claims court, those types of things. So, but I want to emphasize is that what you have before you is just a framework for cost recovery, it basically say that we're authorizing the DAFD Board to establish a cost, a fee, if they feel they need to do it. If they collect money, where's it going to go that benefits everybody? And so, we're going to put it in, into one of the capital accounts, either through the apparatus. That kind of justifies our time in putting it all together. But I did want to emphasize that, that the next step is that resolution in which I will be going to the DAFD Board with a list of recommendations on what I think the DAFD ought to bill for. If there's consensus across the three municipalities, we shouldn't bill for structure fires, then I'm not going to present that to the DAFD Board. But what is absolutely essential is that each municipality has some type of cost recovery in place so that we can bill for hazardous materials incidents. All right, Seratitle III allows us to do that. Imagine, if you will, and you talked about your taxpayers, and you don't want to get the people that are already paying taxes, right? But what about these businesses that have deliveries of hazardous materials? What about these gas stations that are taking gas deliveries in the tankers? What if they spill here in downtown Dexter? DAFD is going to bear the cost of cleaning that up. I have to, and we've got to get it cleaned up for the municipality, right? But without a cost recovery, I can't go back and bill those fees. But the federal law says that we can, provided we have a cost recovery in place. Now, they're not taxpayers in Dexter. That tanker's not a taxpayer. In many cases, some of these businesses that are hauling things through are not taxpayer. And so, we need to have something in place. I'm not saying this is perfect, but at least we go into the DAFD Board and say, hey, maybe I present on a list of ten things. And they're good to say, hey, no, no, we only want to bill for hazardous materials. I'm good with that, okay, but we have to have something.
Yeah. Sure.
Um, young here on, you know, the record, you said, the Congress issued payment invoices by responsible party. The shared third department should place all funds in the capital improvement saving from. DAFD shall not use these funds to reduce its normal operating expenses. So we can't even buy it.
No, because our.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, hazard committee.
And that's for, the reason is that we do our operations and maintenance budget, and you all pay yearly, so it's all set, it's there. And we're not going to take our budget next year and say, hey, because we got ten thousand dollars last year. Yeah, so we don't want to do this.
Okay.
Then we're after what is due.
Okay.
Did talk about it real well.
So we're not that far behind you?
Oh, no, 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 okay. We're all the same, the same.
Well, it said that they'd already talked about it, so I'm thinking, well, maybe that has some type of.
It's been kicked around DAFD since I've been here, is off and on.
Hasn't had. A lot of, we're trying to get the money back on the table. See, it just will be for a real, it's not really.
And this draft was actually put together from, I tried to look at Washoug County and what everybody else is doing, and kind of meshed the language, there are particularly departments that are area departments and authorities that represent multiple municipalities, and this was the way that they seemed to do it that made sense, and I'm scared of everything.
And I'll elaborate.
Yeah, um, thank you, I think I'm more comfortable with the draft is to a level that we can differentiate between the reasons, the, you know, various things, I agree in terms of, you know, what on taxpayers versus, you know, businesses, there are circumstances, you mentioned, like hazmat situation, or utilities, you know, having to stand by the wire on the ground and things like that, that I think it's easier to see and to me say, yeah, this is warranted versus, you know, I see house fires, and that's to me it's a very different circumstance, and also an accident versus somebody doing purposely something stupid that they know they should not do. Again, to me, that intention is a, is a big difference as well, so. I see the value of this, I see especially in circumstances that you're field with insurance company, or with liability company, or whatnot, that it's you want to have something in place, but I would like to see more definition and differentiation.
Yeah, so the process will be is, if we have a general consensus that this is the ordinance each municipality wants to pass, then again, it goes to DAFD Board, and I would talk to all of them about that list that you're talking about putting together. And then, of course, Zach and Sean are your representatives out there, and then we have a voice in that resolution piece. This is not going to be easy to get agreement on, but we absolutely need an ordinance. And we have to go over there, that's for sure.
He said, he reminded me, it doesn't apply on visual aid, right, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't.
All it has to do with this is geographic boundary of the.
Correct. Correct, now, there is some rollover a little bit, so if we go on a hazardous materials into another municipality and help them, if they have a cost recovery, let's use Chelsea, they have cost recovery over there, so. So if they have hazardous materials event, and we go over there and help them, they're going to bill that, the person responsible for that event, and they're going to pull our numbers as well. The cost of, again, and the cost of all the people that are there. And they're going to charge those folks and then send us a check, right? Now, if it's the other way around, and it happens here in Dexter, and we call now, we're out the money, we can't bill anybody, we don't have cost recovery ordinance to be able to do that.
So they would charge you if they have the cost recovery?
Uh.
Ordinance?
No.
They would not.
That's a joy.
Okay, I have two things, the first is, I think I'm trying to figure out how common this is. So would you be able to take any guess at how many, or what percent of municipalities do have an ordinance like this in Michigan, or this, the country as a whole?
Nearly all of them, I'll say ninety percent. Because these were pushed back when Seratitle III and the Hazwacker programs, back in the early eighties, and there was a push for environmental cleanup, where they made people that spilled stuff or allowed toxic chemicals into the environment, and they were responsible for it. So, you know, a lot of legal stuff in between there.
Okay, thank you. I think my second point was, initially, I was feeling a little bit uncomfortable with this. I, the way it was presented originally maybe seemed that we were just going to be charging everyone for services I feel as if they're already paying for. But I think hearing some of these questions about the intentions, and I feel okay with that. The only issue I do feel is a little bit, is that I'm not sure, at some point, I still feel a little bit that we are charging people just because we feel as if there's money being left on the table, that we don't necessarily have a purpose for, that we don't otherwise really, I don't want to say we don't need it. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I feel. At some point, I still feel uncomfortable charging people to some degree with these services.
So, that's a very bad question, so from a legal standpoint, do the attorneys will tell you that when you write this ordinance, it has to apply to everybody in the municipality across the board equally? You can't say if this, then that, or if this, then that. Or we might charge these guys because we think they can pay it, or they can't pay. It has to be charged equally across the board, the whole ordinance has to be applied by the Fire Department or by DAFD equally across the board. There were some comments about, well, maybe we only charge for accidents on North Territorial, because everybody uses that, or many people that don't live in this, we simply cannot do that. So the catch-all for that is the, what Zach mentioned was the appeals board. And what I've seen many municipalities do is that we may just send out a bill to a resident who had a car accident, send them a bill for two hundred and fifty dollars, well, somebody should be telling them, hey, file an appeal. They just simply mark down that you're arrested, you're already paying tax dollars to DAFD. You guys would need that bill for, and you could easily say, doesn't make sense, you don't have to pay. Right, so we take care of our taxpayers, but we have to bill equally. So, that takes care of that.
Okay, I'm not sure how I feel about that still a little bit. I feel strange that we're saying people, we're sending the bill, and if you don't like it, come to the appeals board. It feels like we're throwing a challenge at them, that, it just feels like we're adding stress with them, and their life is not necessary. And I also worry that people aren't going to understand that process. If they're not very intimate with it, they might feel uncomfortable coming here, and now they're paying for things that they don't need to pay for. And I, I would feel really bad about that.
I get it.
I've written enough of these, worked with enough people, that the way this is laid out is this protects your local taxpayer. Now, again, if, back to that structured fire, I have to send a bill that says, here's our manpower, here's our good, and all of that. But then, if we have something in there that says, we will accept your insurance payment, if your insurance payment's only five hundred, then that's what we accept, if your insurance company fights it and says, we're not going to pay anything, we're not going to bill you the five hundred dollars, okay, we're not here to hurt our people, but you're already paying a high insurance premium. Why shouldn't your, some of that money come back to your community, so? It's not designed to hurt the individual homeowner and taxpayer.
Yeah, so, I might be a little bit confused, you said that like you can't have, you have to equally apply these rules to everyone. But then you also said that if the insurance doesn't pay for it, you won't throw that, so I'm like confused there.
That's the bills piece, is if you say, I send it to the homeowner, the homeowner sends it into their insurance company, their insurance company will either send them a check, I've even had insurance companies that will pay the whole bill. It depends on the insurance company. But in that case, we certainly do not want to put an individual in a further hole than they're already in, we're just going to take what the insurance company gives us and we write off.
Okay, and you said like the cost recovery ordinance is distributed across the country. Do other ordinances have this in the CO four, is that how they deal with this?
Yes. And if you want to look, I would recommend looking at. And if you want to look, I would recommend looking at, uh, the, the three closest ones to Dexter as an area fire department. Saline is an area fire department, uh, Brighton is an authority, uh, and Chelsea's an authority, and so they, they have very similar cost recovery.
Thank you, both of your questions, uh, good stuff, yeah?
Well, and I'll throw out some things of general conversation, so. During COVID times, I was sitting in, uh, which was, obviously, by our sitting in McDonald's. And the lady behind me decided it was more important to check her Instagram feed than realize she was running a high bummer. So, she dogged the bumper, I had to have it redone. And one of the things I made sure of, because this is on my insurance, is make sure that I got that rental car every single day. The car was in the shop, even if I didn't really need it, because I've been paying for it, again, just money philosophy, I've been paying into this, I want to get the benefit for it. Um, it is, I, I'm going to point out, uh, kind of the similar thing, where we're paying for general service as residents who have properties that would be accidents on. But we also pay for the service, so zoning permits and building permits. We pay as residents of Dexter to have staff to administer that, but when we go in to build a debt. We pay that extra cost because it now costs some extra action, some extra activity. So, that's kind of how I view it, and how the detail is, how fine tuned do we get that? You know, one of the things that very few people ever charge on the zoning or building side, is if someone comes in and asks a question. Like, how big can my debt be, how can my fence be, those types of things, those are kind of baseline. But then now, when we start to activate, we have to go and do stuff. Uh, so I just wanted to throw that kind of concept out there.
So, if you get more iterations at the D A F D board level, we'll bring it back here. If there are certain things you want to change, to try and work on in the process, I think we do want to help do that. Um, Zach, that's the fire department's board, as an introductory. I don't know. There's not actually a proposal made, it just sounds so.
So, I mean, there would be, you said, that is, the, uh, actual, uh. Getting this ordinance through the, in two years of government would be difficult. Or maybe that, that they're wrong, can you, can you tell me why it would be difficult, or what, did you make it much more difficult?
The, the difficult piece is that each board will have a tendency to say, well, if it occurred in our municipality, then we should get the money. And as, as Mayor Keough said, is, you know, what if there's two hundred events in Dexter City, and a hundred in Dexter Township, and fifty in Webster? And we do all this billing, and we get, and, and really, you're only going to get thirty to forty percent back on, on the dollar. But, you know, how do we separate all of that out, and should it go back to the municipality, or should it go to D A F D that had to expend the resources? We had to pay the payroll, we had to ma, uh, do maintenance on the gap brass. Um, we didn't want to put it into the operational maintenance budget, our yearly budget, because then people start saying, well, gee, we can, we might get. Forty thousand dollars in, in cost recovery, so we should reduce D A F D's budget next year by forty thousand dollars. We didn't want that to, to happen, because those are really hard numbers to bear. And so, we're, we're trying to put it into the capital improvement, and we have seven hundred thousand dollar fire trucks, admitted one point five million dollar fire trucks. We got equipment that needs to be replaced, that we wrote on budget, we're all for, we're starting to, we're doing better. So, the idea was that no matter what the department goes through and bills for, we're going to put it in that equipment fund. But I think there's still some board members that think that that money just ought to go back to the municipality. And, and that'll be the challenge, is, is getting through that, that discussion.
Some members from both areas?
I don't know exactly who's aware on this, because we've just started talking about it. Uh, but my understanding from other fire chiefs is that, that's always the piece that, that's hard.
Thank you for your help with that.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll probably see this again, uh, you know, at some point. We'll be done, uh, for, I don't know, we'll put it in my, Zach, thanks again, we were aware of that. Um, we'll move down to individuals M four, considering, you know, the question, are you considering requests for numbers? Concerned on a little design discussion. Uh, I can tell you that at the B D A. Meeting last Thursday. Um, my first chapter, and my software has to start at the B D A, so, I'm going to be there. So, don't choose me again. Please, please. That's why I'm going to do it, I'm going to be there, that's what I'm saying, so. I think the fire chief is trying to do as much work as they can, so.
Yeah, I think they want two committee members, yeah, two, yeah, and then they also want those people to, you know, to report, and then bring back to the interview, so. I think two parts can happen at the side of this, basically, because it's usually actually easier to do this. Or share that in advance.
Yeah, I think that would be the intent was for each board committee to assess, uh, these questions, uh, select representatives, and then. Have those representatives relay those comments back to our preparation commission. And then continue forward with speaking in, in the design discussions.
Good question, so, Tom and I are there, and we have two more show, the different board members. Are any issues with that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we get that.
Okay, so we have the same one, we're thinking one additional, or are we in a higher position, or is it something else?
If we got Alex, we'll add if you want.
Okay.
So, that could be a lot of.
Okay, is there anything else on there about being there?
I think we're in, you know, you know.
Just to confirm the obligation here, I, it, it's seven years. Um, specifically, how many meetings, i- it was it just that one February, I believe?
So, so, um, the idea was, um. At, at the January, February meeting of each individual board committee, they, they would talk about, um, this project. And then at the February meeting of the park renovation commission, they would, they attended their first park's wreck meeting. Uh, as representatives from each board committee. And then at the March meeting, uh, we would invite Smith Group, who had, um, to essentially hear the entire group feedback. So, it would be at least be the February and March meetings.
Okay, thank you, okay.
So, we're trying to change this.
I believe, that's how I'm saying.
Yeah, I didn't try to mark dates, but February is being successful. Moving forward, Mr. Gilbert is our representative. Okay, moving on to that, four, seven by thousands. Do you have a sound question?
I do, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, again, there's also that R X this year was.
Yeah.
Right, one question, um, so we will have a chance to discuss this question, these questions before, or at some point?
Yeah, I think we need to do it on the fourth page. I don't know if you're talking, I remember, I'm going to hear it back. Let me tell you these, the questions. I've got three weeks till then, I just fixed that up. Thank you, Chris, call the vote.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
A Rob?
Yes.
Cousin?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Who was the second to come? Okay, and if you're thinking about those questions in the last three weeks, and you want to reach out, you can now or call.
We're about out.
Yeah. Okay, I'll for comments, I will start with the two representatives, everyone, you want to talk?
Um, I have no comments, but thank you for trusting me to represent our interests at the R X commission.
You're doing it.
Yeah, um, I was really impressed with Paul's insightful voice tonight. I thought we had a nice chat with the kids.
So, my family and I had a very nice time at the ice mess, that was Roland's first joint for hopping. So, we all survived it. It was, it was really fun, so it was wonderful to see those, um, they are beautiful. And I also want to say that, um, it's really hard for me to see all the activities and all the, um. Things that are coming out of our, that's all here, here in the city, and very near, indeed.
For him, it's true.
Much as I love snow, I really love snow, um, as I was driving to town the other day on, on the bridge. I saw all that white space, uh, and I know we talked about it in the past, saying about painting murals or something on there, I'd like to see that picked around again. Um, it's that nice pop of color. Um, and something for staff to pop to my mind that, uh, previously counselled through money from. I forget the, the fellow's name, Ken, is the architect who specialized in fire.
Daniel?
Yes, um, to do a remote session. He, he presented to the National Fire, Fires Association, so we're talking about needs of all those different spaces. Um, it would be good to hear it from them, so if you could give a shout back in. Um, I forget how much we were able to put up, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, everyone, we're wrapping up on the on-ramp discussion. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this?
Yeah, that's got a real important part on this cost recovery thing, so. Um, you guys have a wonderful river here through this town, and you got great parks and things like that. Um, under the cost recovery ordinance, allowing D A F D to, uh, uh, bill a hazardous materials person who makes that spill. Imagine if you spill in that river of, uh, oil or some other product that, uh, D A F D, the hazmat team has to work with. Or the city of Dexter with D P W, the water department, any of those folks that might be out there and have to work on that cleanup. Under a cost recovery ordinance, they could submit all of their costs as well to the fire department. And we can turn around and send those costs back to the, uh, the person that caused the incident. Um, and maybe that's a tweak in the, uh, cost recovery work, um, if a municipality itself has expenses. That, that are outside of the fire department's expenses, then that can get be a person in the municipality, so. Um, I just want to paint that picture, that we're really vulnerable right now. If somebody does something in the city, it costs us a lot of time after, by all city personnel or town officials, so, thank you, sorry for that.
No, thanks for having us, Judy. Anyone else on the, just want to speak this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone on, on line there.
Well, I'll, I'll send a letter, uh, to Reno, to, to my co-host here in Dexter.
Oh, my God.
I think, uh, very sorry, I have three minutes. He needs to thank you for that, yeah.
I love you, yeah. I'll see you later for dinner, please.
I don't think you did.
I'll move by the trigger. Set the timer.
Oh, this zoom, oh my God. This zoom can be a pain in the butt sometimes.
Is it not?
No, it can't, I don't, I just don't know why it's not. There we go.